Follow this meeting here with Central Curry School District Board of Directors to order, January 15th, 2020 at Colby Beach High School lecture. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think Luke can read the mission statement tonight since he has a fresh copy.
Okay, Central Curry School District Number One, mission statement. The mission of the Central Curry School District Number One, in partnership with families and community, is to ensure each and every student is prepared to succeed and contribute in a global society by engaging in a challenging personalized program of educational excellence.
Thank you very much. Okay, number two, celebrations and presentation.
So, this evening actually is somewhat more of an action item, eight point one is, January is School Board Recognition and Appreciation Month, and I could either wait and give you your certificates then, but I don't want to belittle the appreciation that we as a community have for you all as volunteers, and I apologize, my phone is one of those weird phones from nowhere, let me turn this off. But the reason I mentioned a little bit early is if we'd like to have cake now, we can get the cake going and then eat during the meeting, but with that, later in the agenda, we will have a celebration in your recognition.
I have no opinion whatsoever. Whatever's easy, whatever everybody wants to do.
Alrighty.
No thoughts?
No thoughts.
I guess start cutting up, passing it out while you guys...
Let's do that.
Is that worth it?
Okay. Who does not want a piece?
Oh, no.
No? Do yours resolutions?
Working on it.
Okay, so everybody do yours.
A little piece, a baby piece.
Yeah, she can have mine.
She can give her the biggest chunk.
I don't know how you're asking this.
Go forward, Major, come on.
It would be worth it.
Maybe some cake for the audience. Since they brave the elements deal.
Cheese, lettuce, and tomato.
Okay, well, we'll deal with the official part at eight point one. Okay. All right, agenda changes, three point one, we're gonna add eight point six, proposed calendar change for one twenty-four, 2020.
That's correct.
Yeah.
You okay with that?
In concurrence.
Okay.
Consent agenda approved minutes in December 18th, 2019, regular meeting. I did actually skim that, I was channeling Barbara while I read the minutes, started changing meetings.
I move to approve the consent agenda I presented. All second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Did you guys say aye?
Yeah, oh, aye.
Maybe I'm losing it in this year, I don't know. All right, motion approved. Okay, citizen input, yes, please state your name and address for the record, have to the lectern if you're interested.
And we've got the little pushers and comments.
Oh, oh, those are done, excellent, I forgot all about that.
I forgot. And you want to say this part?
Oh, yeah, I really gotta get my...
They gotta fill out the little card.
Well, no, since there's no input, yeah, we're still kind of slowly overhauling the public input process here, but, so yeah, very good. I guess nobody, no takers, that's fine. All right, district reports, Ms. Major, you're up first.
Right, um, I mean, since last evening, well, oh.
Oh, thank you.
Since the last evening, I mean, not much has happened.
I'll try again. Sorry. Continue.
Basketball's really kind of kicked off, and I just see that the kids are, there's so much time that goes into basketball, I don't know, like, I don't know if it's necessarily good thing because these kids are coming into first period like exhausted, physically and mentally like dead, like they've been run dry on any kind of energy, and with finals coming up, that kind of stresses me, but, I mean, that, I think finals are gonna be all right, I mean, not much has happened too much in the art world, Winston's going to bring a few paintings to a museum competition, which will help our center school in the arts. It's a little rainy, like, I don't know, no one's like out playing hopscotch, like, it's just, you kind of come to school and do your stuff and everything else.
Do kids still play hopscotch?
We played hacky sack last year in calculus.
That one completely, that was like I had to teleport back to my time.
Yeah, we all came up and we were like, we don't really wanna do anything, we just played hacky sack, and we went out and we played, and it was a blast. Oh, Pierce is bringing a, like, making all the athletes' kids do study groups before finals, I'm not sure if you knew about that.
No, I do, that's a good one to break up now.
Yeah, I was thinking it was Friday.
Yeah, no, that's a great thing, why don't you explain to them up there?
Okay, so, next week for finals, Tuesday and Wednesday, either before school for half an hour or after school for half an hour, all the athletes' kids are gonna come in and help tutor other kids for finals, which is really good, just a little extra help, but like, there's a lot of kids doing it, like, almost twenty coming in and just volunteering, and that's really cool because she's like heading that off and she's like, I'm not gonna get out of it, go help, okay? And I think that's a tradition that actually could keep going. Yeah. It's just finals.
All right.
That's it.
No, that's good. Any questions, Ms. Major? Very good, thank you. Okay, financial reports, Crystals.
They're at the top of your piles there, and so Crystal has, Ms. Carpenter has supplied our monthly reports, but I had these in some particular order, in the green, sorry, the revenue, she did share that our, kind of our cash on hand is a little higher than normal, and she attributed that to more people prepaying their property tax as compared to other years, so that gives our, so that's that. Unless there are any particular questions, she did invite you to give her a call or send her an email if you had any specific questions. You also might remember, right before holiday, it may have been the first week of January, five days, that she sent Administration and Board the auditor's report, and at some point, will probably, well, in February, that'll be an action item to declare, and, but we do have copies of that volume, voluminous, voluminous, volume of interesting reading available for you in print if we'd like those tonight. Crystal, I was just kind of wrapping up your reports, is there something you wanted to add?
Spores 20 to 32.
Okay. Is that about halftime?
It's halftime, I just popped in real quick, they actually kept with them the whole way up until the last email go through.
Good, okay. So I shared that the tax, the...
The revenue.
Revenue seems to be a little higher than normal because people may have prepaid their taxes for the year, and any questions you could ask.
You're at ninety-one percent.
We received an enormous amount, it's higher than I expected for the month of November, so, but that just might be a sign of the times right now, people taking advantage of that three percent, being able to do that, but you can see what's done to our cash on the year or year.
Do they have any questions, Mr.?
Nope.
Okay, well, thanks for coming in.
Perfect timing, huh?
Yeah, yeah, as always, if something comes up, you just shoot her an email.
I was telling Mr. Wilson, if you guys have a question or email, I'll respond to all of you, so if one has a question, we might all have it.
Thank you. All right, principal reports, Mr. Dan.
You should have mine somewhere in that pile of stuff in front of you. The first thing is, a bunch of kids made cards, and I kind of sprinkled them out throughout you, there was actually the red one, or by Sam is a personalized one for Scott who's not here, it's pretty fancy, so I don't know who it is, the red one down there, and then a couple of classes, Mrs. Hughes class and Mrs. Hamm's kindergarten class above Tina's head there, who's not paying attention because she's on her cellphone, but anyway, the kids did a really good job, and they wanted to thank you guys for all your service and everything too, so, thank you, and for me too, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Not a lot to go on, just real quick, boys, their first games of this weekend, tournament in Walport, wrestling, Nolan Timias, Jake Champlin, and George Turner all qualified for the Reykjavik Classic in Redmond, I'm not sure, the coaches aren't able to go, I'm not sure if the parents are taking them, but then the next weekend, there's a big one called Kid State in Salem where these three, plus any other wrestlers that want to go, can go to that one too. Attendance contest, right here is our capture the flag contest, Tina and Carly made this at the library, I think we bought the flags, Tina, and then Carly has the final maker thing, and so this is a capture the flag, and every week, we have three wings of school, the K-2 wing, the 3-5 wing, then the middle school wing, and then the class with the best percentage of attendance gets to get the flag, so this was our first week, so they didn't really get it captured, they earned it, and then next Monday morning, right after school starts, we'll announce the classes that won for this week, and if it's not the same class that already has a flag, then the other class, like Mr. Rone's class, was the winner, right?
Yeah.
Last week, yeah, so he has a flag, so hopefully they get to keep it, if not, Ms. Sprouse might be able to take her whole class en masse, and they go to Mr. Rone's room outside his door in the hallway and take the flag, because there's Trent made little holders by each door for the flag, so it's just one way, we're trying all these different ways to encourage kids to come to school, and with our middle schoolers, tardiness was a problem, so we're just, we're calling attendance whatever it is the first period, so that kind of kills two birds with one stone for attendance, and the tardiness of coming to school late too, so we're pretty excited about it, and we'll hope to see how it goes, but anyway, thank you, Tina and Carly and everybody else, Trent especially, did a lot of extra work finding the scenes to get it going, so that's the attendance contest. Our first band concert was last night, I don't know if you had kids in it yet, what?
I saw the video.
Yes, the videos were on, Friends of Riley Creek, if you haven't, Friends of Riley Creek's a good place to join and get all the information, Tina and I usually do the posting on there, and then we had a new hire, hopefully I didn't steal Tim's number there, we hired Heather Tucker, and Heather is amazing, she's been subbing force for five years, and it's, she's been improving her education, taking classes that she needed, and she finally was able to get to the point where she could take our HQ test, and she passed, and so it's, she really persevered, so it's, and she has all the experience you could ever imagine with five years of subbing force in every area of the school, so we're very, very happy to have Heather there too. OBOB is the Oregon Battle of the Books, and we did that last year, McKinsey Lee kind of got that started, and the state picks certain novels, and the kids read the novels, and then there's a contest to ask questions, to answer questions about the novels, and last year, we sent a team to Medford, so the plan is to do that again this year, we're also trying to get the three, four, or five, there's a, that's a...
Division.
A division, yes, that's what I was looking for, a division for that too, so, and we'll have that information for you in the spring when they come back with that too, because it's a lot of fun for the kids, and this really kind of, the kids that struggle to read, that's not too exciting for them, but for some of our readers that are way above grade level, this gives them a little more challenging thing to do, and it kind of motivates them to keep reading even though they already know how to read, you know, so we're excited about that, and then our heat pump, you know, we've had the big boiler, for three years now, we've been kind of not having great enough heat, and Trent, you know, Louis before him, would sometimes have to come in on the weekend to turn it on so it'd be warm enough on Sunday, but we finally got the new pump in, we didn't even know, I don't think it needed a pump for a few weeks back, so we got the new pump in, and we got it wired with electricity today, and immediately, within twenty or thirty minutes, even in my office, I could tell the difference, it's a difference from me, and that's why I wrote, it's a difference from the registers being warmed, and they're actually gonna be hot, and the middle wing, three, four, or five, have been wearing coats pretty much any day that it's cold, most of them will wear coats, and now I think they're gonna be wearing shorts and t-shirts, because it's gonna make a huge difference, and it's probably been limping along for probably twenty years, I mean, you know, I remember my first couple years here, we didn't, we had to add some heaters into the library and the band room because there wasn't enough heat, and we thought it was just because the water pressure wasn't high enough to get the hot water up, because those rooms are a little bit higher than all the other rooms, and it probably is just because this pump wasn't working the way it should be, but it's such old technology that, you know, Hootie, you know, all the guys that worked on battleships years ago aren't around anymore, you know, so we're very excited about the heat pump working, and the staff is working hard on starting to get ready for semester report cards and then conferences at the end of the month too. That's all I had, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any questions by any length.
What's the timeline for the Battle of the Books?
I'm not sure, because we just got the names, the titles of the books, but I'll find out like you have.
Traditionally, the schools, if they have more than one team, would have a battle within the school, and then in some schools, that winning team goes, or sometimes they do an all-star team, and then that's the group that represents Medford. That's March.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's usually the spring.
Yeah, so I think we'll take what the championship round is in Medford, and we'll go back from there, because they have a web, if you just type in OBOB Oregon, it'll come up to the Oregon webpage, it'll tell you what the books are, what the authors are, and it's gonna be pretty cool, and actually, last year, one of the authors actually came to Riley Creek to talk to the kids, it was pretty neat, you know, so I was just excited.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dan, Mr. Metzger.
All right, mine always looks a little more daunting than Mr. Denning's, but that's just because I want you to be able to, you know, take it away and actually read it.
Elementary school.
So I'll try to keep it short. So finals week, same as Mr. Denning, we're coming up on the end of the semester, finals week's January 24th through the 27th, kids are nervous, a little, you know, they're stressing about it, but, you know, that's what we kind of expect from finals, so it's coming up fast. Mrs. McGinnis is prepping a curriculum night for the high school, this is something that we used to, that was done a long time ago, there was an international night that was done, so we started looking at what kind of event could we reply, or do here at the high school, that when we have STEM night over at the elementary school, and so many people show up, what can we do at the high school that might attract some families to come in, whether they be current high school families, or even some of the elementary school families coming over and saying, hey, this is what we get to do at the high school. So she's planning that as part of her admin program, you'll see a little more about that hopefully in our next board meeting, and then, yeah, prepping for state testing, senior projects, internships, all of that good stuff that seniors have to finish before they get to cross that finish line. Point one, under continuing progress on goals, that's the same as last time, I forgot to delete it, so technology, Wi-Fi, the little blue dot means it's working, so we actually have Wi-Fi in the building now, and as promised, the upgrade is pretty significant, the bandwidth increased quite a bit, the coverage is more reliable, and the speeds are faster, now we'll get to start getting student devices on them and seeing how it actually survives a stress test.
Oh, I'll try it.
Yeah, so I sent out the passwords to teachers today to remind them of what they are, and so we'll probably start seeing more student devices on the student network soon, and we'll see how it survives. Internships and college visitations, we've been working with a group called Recruit Hippo, that's their catchy name, they're trying to put kids out in career-related internships, not just getting them to a job site, I think to see a job, but something that they might actually want to do long-term. Tomorrow, they have a trip out to Coos Curry Electric, NBC Fisheries in Brookings. We also had sort of an interesting opportunity, Wyotech College visited our manufacturing classes, Wyotech is a spinoff, they were originally with the University of Wyoming, they eventually went their own direction, they are an automotive, heavy diesel, and auto restoration school in Laramie, Wyoming, so they happen to have a rep out touring some of the rural schools, a guy came in, gave a great presentation, they've invited Ms. Lemke, myself, and Mr. Becker to go out and actually see the school, and, you know, we kind of waffled about it until I sat down with a couple of kids who seemed interested in the thing, and I said, okay, would you guys actually go if you knew somebody who actually saw the place, and they went, yeah, that would totally help our confidence and like implying, so I thought, well, Laramie, if you Google Laramie, Wyoming, it's not as exciting as Gold Beach High, Gold Beach in many ways, less so because it's out in the middle of Wyoming, but, you know, we'll see if I can take a trip out there.
I'll go too.
You'll go too, okay, Teresa and I will go party it up in Laramie. So CTE reinvestment, this was our other big opportunity that not many people knew about, so I thought it was a chance to come brag about it at the board meeting, we were contacted by ODE, since we had received a certain amount, under a certain amount of funding for our CTE investment programs under Measure 98, we were able to qualify for a revitalization grant, so we had a conversation last week with a panel from ODE, we asked for money to expand the foundry program in the metal shop, so replacing the current foundry and adding a sand molar to it, which would allow students to create their own molds to cast aluminum in, as well as develop an emergency medicine program for the health careers class, so expanding on our first aid, but actually being able to work with Calor and see about, we can't technically offer EMT-1 here, but there's actually a certification that leads to a CNA that we could offer, that same certification makes it much easier to get into an EMT-1 program, so it expands our current agreement with SWAC and buys some equipment that would allow us to expand our offerings in that. Athletics, basketball's playing right now, girls are coming off winning against Myrtle Point, boys had a tough loss, oh, I skipped my professional development, I'll get to that. Wrestling, wrestling has really stepped it up this year, it's been, it's interesting to see, there are teams that everybody kind of goes, oh, right, we have a wrestling team, because it's disappear for three days at a time, they're just, they're gone a lot, they came back, we have a trophy up on our front desk, they took third overall at Rogue River, Landon Timias was recognized as the best overall wrestler for his division there at that event, and then all of our wrestlers took top three in their divisions, and then Mathletes and Knowledge Bowl, Knowledge Bowl took fifth overall in a recent meet, fifth sounds like, you know, well, okay, they took fifth, except there were twelve competing teams, and then there were a number of essentially JV teams for Knowledge Bowl, so they came out pretty high, especially considering the competition they've got, going back up to number three. PLC reports, curriculum team reviewed our first set of curriculum, which is all back there, it's shiny, it's new, and we are working towards an intentional process and some standards that we want to set to avoid shopping blindness, because when you have stuff that's from the early 2000s and you see new books, you go, we'll buy it, but it's really just because it's new, and that's awesome, but we're trying to look at what serves students the best. We looked at board goals, particularly around technology, looking for ones that have a heavy tech component that supplements the material, and then we've been implementing a little bit with the measuring what matters protocol, so it's walkthroughs that target student engagement in the classroom, it's not evaluative of teachers, it's not looking at what the teachers are doing, it's looking at what kids are doing in the classroom, and hoping to see something more than just students sitting there going... You know, there is a, there's a point to lecture and notes, there is, it's a tool that teachers need, and it's useful, but it shouldn't be your only tool in the toolbox, so that's, it's kind of looking at what our, what instructional practices we see happening here most at the high school. Couple of quick opportunities, so the furniture that was purchased by Gold Beach Youth Foundation is in place, so Ms. Peppin's classroom, the science classroom have new furniture, well, we have new lab tools in the science room, and then a set of modular collaborative student desks in Ms. Peppin's room, if you want to see them, this is kind of what schools are going to now when they design a classroom intentionally, we were, they were really excited about that, kids were really appreciative of Gold Beach Youth Fund because they approached Mr. Lunsing, who was our student council advisor, and said, what do kids want at the school? If we had $10,000 to spend, what would it be? And most kids said furniture, and so we said, okay, we started looking at it, and we've gotten good feedback from kids and teachers on this one, so much so that it was one of the things we recognized, we need to start doing some furniture upgrades if we want to start having classes using technology anymore, we can't have them in desks that were designed to sit there in the 60s going like this with pencil and paper, so we are looking at building a replacement model for aging and breaking furniture. The other thing I wanted to share tonight, we, Mr. Bigelow, our science teacher and I, just had a conversation with OSU about setting up what is called Smile Club, which sounds very like friendly, it's science, math, and I unfortunately don't recall the other, the I and the L right at the moment, but then education's the last one, so I think it's interactive learning. The goal is to set up a science club at the high school, and eventually, if the middle school's interested, at the middle school as well. What OSU does is they provide a curriculum, a set of equipment, and then competitions that students can go and participate in, because what they recognize is that there used to be a lot of science clubs that happened around the state, those have kind of dropped off the map because people go, well, how do you do a science club anymore, where's there a competition? OSU said, we'll build it. So what the school does, they do a cost sharing program, they pay for part of a stipend for the teacher to serve as a coach, they pay for transportation, they pay for competitions, materials, equipment, they'll send the stuff that you need to do similar projects and things like that, and the goal is to get students interested in science beyond just their wired science classroom, so that's something that we're looking at doing, we're looking at where to take the money from right at the moment, it's about, only about a twelve, I shouldn't say only, but it's about a $1,200 investment, so it's not a massive one, and I think we're gonna find a place to do it, and it's an opportunity to, again, try to build some interest in science at Gold Beach High.
Very good.
That's a wrap.
Thank you, Mr. Metzger, any questions? All right, superintendent report.
All right, on the blue sheet, if you'd like to follow along, our involvement is pretty steady, as you see over the last couple of years, just one down from a year I'll be attending the superintendent's conference in Lincoln City next weekend, and then following that, I'll be serving on an accreditation team at Trinity Academy, looking forward to that visitation. Reminder that you as a board have your next meeting with Renee on Wednesday, February 5th, and then a couple of us will be attending the Bonds, Ballots, and Buildings Conference in Salem a little bit later than that. Under personnel actions, you can see there, I did want to hold the last one, just, it's for your information at this point, but I have not received an official written notice, but to be aware, this is the intent of the employee, but I'll hold public announcement till I have the official paper. Tom shared a little bit about getting the heating system done, we also actually had some repairs on the high school boiler as well, and have Reese Electric installing the heat in the digital arts and band rooms next week, and we're getting a finalized bid to replace the obsolete heating system in the metal shop. And finally, hopefully you all got a chance to see the article in Rural Light Magazine, if not, I can get some more copies, but it was pretty, pretty special to have us included in that, in this magazine that goes all over the state. And then a couple of personal items for me, I have the opportunity and honor to serve on the grand jury for the next three months, I don't want to say, today was my first day, it got canceled, so that's okay, I'd rather have it reserved and ready to serve when ready, and just a note to you all, I'll be out of the building for the week of February 11th on a little holiday. That's my report.
Very good. Okay, old business, seven point one, student success activity.
Okay, so that's the green packet, so you might remember, at our December meeting, I took the responses that the public had submitted on the online survey, or through public forums, and then you'll see some additions as well, and then on the, so I'll let you read those at your leisure, but on the last page, I wanted to kind of summarize kind of what the next steps, and so my, my plan is, as you see, based on this current information, what seems to be some of the topics that are rising higher to the surface, and so my goal would be to then take these topics that are all listed here, and then have another round of public forums, have individual conversations with those families and students that represent the underrepresented that we've talked about before, with the goal that we whittle, or whittle's not the right word, begin to prioritize from this broader list, specific activities that maybe fit under broader categories, as an example... that maybe fit under broader categories. As an example, the top two, uh, areas that the public has stated are priorities. Actually, the top three all kind of fit together. One is to increase the amount of mental health support, counseling, and suicide prevention. The second one is to offer more hands-on life, basic life skills like home economics, personal finance, those types of courses. And in conjunction with that, you see an increase in trades and careers as elective courses. In the next, um, uh, table down, I then took those top ones and put them in those buckets that you're familiar with. You know, the health, the well-rounded education, the, these are the four areas for which we can select in our application. And so the mental health as an example fits under health and safety, um, well-rounded education, increases technology and other electives, the class size initiative there, uh, as well as some other health and safety issues. And then the last, um, page, uh, you might remember question three, or what are those barriers that are getting in the way of kids achieving? And again, these were the, the results of that. So knowing that these are barriers that we recognize, how do we address those through an equity lens that get us to the list of areas of improvement? So if you will, that's kind of the, the next steps. My goal would be to have those public meetings done by your February meeting. And then we would use the month of February, March to prepare the application. Are there any questions about that?
It sounds like a work session.
I, I think eventually it will be. Yeah. Yeah, it will be. And actually, the, the formal application is not due until April 15th. Um, at our conference at Lincoln City next week, we'll be getting the most, uh, recent updates, um, on the application process. So that's my old business report on the Student Success Act.
No.
Thank you. Okay. Your business, 8.1, Proclamation for School Board Recognition Month.
All right. So now is that formal time you've all been waiting for. Um, I actually like to ask my colleagues, uh, standing next to you, for each of us to read a, a whereas statement and, um, in recognition for what you do. And, uh, this is a, um, so I'll start. Um, whereas school boards create a vision for what students should know and be able to do.
Whereas school boards establish clear standards for student performance.
Whereas school boards ensure that student assessments are tied to established standards.
Whereas school boards are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student achievement.
Whereas school boards align school district resources to ensure that students meet standards.
Whereas school boards create a climate that supports the philosophy that all children can learn at high levels.
Whereas school boards build collaborative relationships based on trust, teamwork, and shared accountability, and?
Whereas school boards are committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement.
Now, therefore, we hereby declare our appreciation to the members of the Central Curry School District One Board and School Board, and proclaim the month of January to be School Board Recognition Month.
And we urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the dedication, hard work that you do in preparing today's students for tomorrow's world. I do have certificates for each of you, but I'd like, and so here they are. However, uh, you guys may have recognized, we didn't acknowledge that Mr. McNair is, uh, in Australia, uh, fighting fires, which is pretty awesome. But we haven't had a month where you all been here since September. So with your permission, I'm going to present these to you. You can see them. And then I'm going to present them again in February with, in a photo op, so I can update the other one that still has Brandon McGuinness on it. So, is that okay?
That's perfectly.
All right. So congratulations. Here's the proof of our appreciation for you.
Yes, don't, don't send that home.
Okay, all right. If I make sure you give it to mom and dad, they put it on your refrigerator.
Exactly.
All right. So again, I don't want to belittle the appreciation that we do share, but thanks very much. We'll do our photo op in our February. Next time, we're all together.
All right.
We'll have to do another cake then.
That's right.
In the school choir concert, you guys, the Acapella Administration, Acapella.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty good. There's some, there's some possibilities there. I don't know.
Okay. Uh, 8.2, Division 22 assurances. Oh, oh, I don't know. Do we, do we need to move and?
Uh, sure, why not? Yes.
Sorry, I'm not following along in the other.
I move to proclaim January as School Board Appreciation Month.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? January is hereby proclaimed School Board Appreciation Month. Good. That's somebody's paying attention. Okay. Now I'll go to 8.2. Uh, Division 22 Assurances.
All right. And that's in the violets, violet gray there. So you'll recall that these are, uh, it's an annual report to the community by February 1st of each year, that I need to report to you and the community that we are meeting the 55 standards which are included in the Division 22 standards for public elementary and secondary schools. Um, and so I've, uh, in this document, and if you were looking in your, uh, in your work packet, all of these were, uh, links to the actual law, if you want to reference those. But for purposes of tonight, um, I did review, uh, the 55 standards, and I did find that, uh, our district, and this is evaluating the 19, the 18, 19 school year. And, um, I found that there were two areas that, uh, we are out of compliance. And so I do, I do need to, um, explain those to you, and, and then we are required to have a corrective action in place. So the two that are out of compliance, and actually this first one, um, I'm not sure why it wasn't included last year, because it's probably been about 10 years at least, where we have not had a licensed media specialist under our employ. So the, the area of out of, of being out of compliance is media programs. The district does not have a certified or licensed media specialist. Currently, they're being served by library assistants. So my plan to submit to the state is that we will explore options to have a certified media specialist provide supervision of the local library assistants. And I would ask the South Coast ESD and our other neighboring school districts to see if this would potentially could be a tiered service in the service plan, so that all the small districts can have one supervisor to provide support to all of the smaller libraries. I know it's a model we, we use in Roseburg, so I'm hoping that's going to be our, our way to remedy that problem. Uh, the second one was also a financial issue, and that's instructional materials adoption. And I found that we were out of compliance as a district. You might recall that the state has a seven-year cycle of top, of subjects, and each year, uh, a subject is, uh, up for adoption of new instructional materials. And so in 18, 19, health and social studies were in that seven-year wheel, and we didn't have the, uh, funding available to adopt those materials. Uh, so our correction, corrective action actually is we budgeted significantly about new amounts this year. And not only will we catch up in science, health, and social studies, but we will also be get back in cycle and adopt the English language arts materials which are in the current one. So those, um, with your acceptance, I will send those to ODE to meet the February 1st, uh, guideline. They'll be posted on the district website as required by law. And that's what we got.
Thank you for looking into that.
Sure.
Questions? All right. Okay. 8.3.
I do need a motion, sorry.
Oh, yep.
Motion to, I move to accept the Division 22 Assurances reported as presented. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Report accepted. Thank you. Okay. Now 8.3. Request for leave absence.
So, uh, Mrs. Zuber, uh, at Riley Creek has requested to be granted unpaid leave for two days on February 20, 21 to attend her daughter's wedding, which is out of the area. Uh, as per the bargaining agreement with the CCEA, unpaid leave is required board approval. Uh, the administration jointly recommends you approve her request.
I move to approve the, the request for unpaid leave for Jean Zuber as presented.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay. 8.4, OSBA COSA Project Input. Hopefully everybody saw the email.
Yes. So it was early last week, uh, maybe two weeks ago now, Renee Sessler, our trainer, sent Andy and I a, a request, uh, for the board to consider a little bit of board time tonight to review some proposed changes to the superintendent evaluation model across the state. This is a joint project between OSBA and COSA, and it's on the pink sheet, if you will. And so on the left-hand side is the current nine standards. Uh, and, uh, the proposed, uh, goes down to seven. Um, today I had a little extra time, and so, uh, to try to give you a, a comparison of the two. I'd like to share that with you. Here's a paper coming down. So to the best of my ability in trying to match up word for word, if you will, uh, in the first column, which is the current, those that are circled are those that I found a match in the new. And in the second column, the proposed standards, I tried to indicate the current standard. As an example, they've gone from five bullets to two bullets in standard one. Uh, if you go to standard two, you know, they've moved ethics from number eight back up to number two. So I, I found similar wording from the current eight and, um, put it as part of the new. Uh, it's interesting as you, as you go through and you see some of the, uh, I'm not sure the last, some of the new, uh, initiatives or priorities. Uh, I'm not, I'm not aware of when the current standards were authored. But as an example, if you look at the new standard three, you'll start to see those words that we're starting to see in the student, uh, investment account, in the SSA, equity, culturally responsive, um, and so on. Um, let me see if I have any other. Uh, it's interesting that, uh, in my brief analysis, that the old standard four, they just have to assume that you're an effective manager, because none of those, none of those fit into the new standards.
We don't want your feedback.
That's right. So, uh, again, Renee's request was if you had a chance to read those or if you had further information, um, to share any feedback with her. So as they move forward through that process, um, I'm not sure if you want to necessarily take action tonight, or if this is something you want to look over in the next couple of weeks. We see her on February 5th. I can confirm to see what her deadline is. Um, but there certainly is a time to have any discussion here tonight.
I was just going to say, I, I mean, I don't, yeah, I don't.
If it needs any discussion, or if you want to endorse it as presented.
But, yeah, I, I'd like to pick through it a little more and maybe hit her up at our workshop if that's, if that'll work with her timeline.
Absolutely.
Because I don't, did you send us the copy of this?
I did.
Yeah.
He sent everything in one PDF this time instead of separate.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
Was that better or worse?
It's fine. It just threw me off for a minute.
Yeah. I, I didn't scroll down that far.
No.
But yeah, I mean, yeah, she's okay with.
So I have two weeks, so sure. Okay. I will give her that response.
Unless anybody had, had everybody else reviewed it thoroughly.
I did read it. I liked it. It, it seems to like focus more on relationships and collaboration.
Well, yeah, just that, I mean, nine standards was, yeah.
And if it doesn't fit her timeline, maybe we'll.
If I, if we, yeah, if we need, if she needs the information earlier, I'll let you know that you can send her comments.
Yes. Okay. Okay.
So related to that, in the gray, uh, again, I sent this to you in an earlier packet, are the current nine standards. Okay. And so the process we're in right now is, um, for all licensed evaluation, sorry, let me take that back. You need to, um, before March 15th, you need to notify all licensed staff that their contracts have been extended or renewed. Specifically for the superintendent, the evaluation must be complete by March 15th. The other licensed staff would have their evaluations completed by the end of the school year. So with that said, uh, we're on a similar timeline as we were last year, um, at this time, uh, in the sense that I'm providing you with the, um, the rubrics, if you will. And as you look through, you'll see the standard one, and then what's under visionary leadership. And then you would go through and kind of give a, a rating, evaluating my performance that you've seen in either the past year or the past, since the last time you evaluated me for some of those, some for, for, uh, KELI, that's a little bit, since July. Uh, and then, uh, you would, uh, there is a process where you would give each of your individual ratings. And if I skip in a little bit towards, hmm, there, actually, there's just a culmination sheet. So you do a little bit of math. So you can do it a couple of different ways. Uh, well, before I get to that part. Um, yeah, also in the packet, you will see that I have done my own self-reflection on the same rubric. And so in the back part of the last two or three pages, you'll see my ratings. And then I also, um, gave you some, uh, progress notes on what, around our three, the three evaluation goals that we as a board, you and I agreed to. And so with that information, um, you would now move forward with, um, working on that. So between now and I suggest February 12th, for you all to do individual work. Um, you might want to have a work session. Again, that's, Andy and I talked about this a little bit, about what the next steps might be. Uh, it could be a little bit of a calendaring issue. Um, but however, Andy determines the, the next steps. And then if you were, as an example, if you were to get together in the next couple of weeks in a work session, um, without me, of course, um, and then you would, uh, give Andy about a week or so. Again, this was a, a rough guess on the calendar, trying to match it up with the February meeting. Since our March meeting is on March 18th, it really needs, and my evaluation needs to be done, um, announced in public, in open session. And so that kind of pushes us up to getting this done by February 19th, unless you wanted to alter your March meeting and make it earlier.
Which we did last year.
Which would give you more time to do the evaluation. Which would give you more, which would give you more time to do the evaluation. So those, that's the information I have for you tonight, so I turn it to Andy to, for to set up your next times.
Yeah.
Do we take, how long did we take? We took like an hour, we had like an hour or so.
Yeah, well, yeah, we had an executive session, we had time, just as the board to kind of coagulate our various.
Didn't Scott have, didn't he put the data together?
He did, yeah.
All of our reports, or whatever.
He did, yeah, and turned it into one document, kind of, which is what I want to do this time, same thing, you know, everybody take, you can use these ones.
And then bring it, give it.
Yeah, either email them, or however you want to deliver them, and then prior to our meeting, I'll, I'll just have, we'll have one document that's an average of the five.
So we'll do the maybe, are you saying we'll do just the one meeting?
Well, that's what I was going to look, because I'm, my problem is, I'm leaving on February 6th, and I'm not going to be back until after, until the 18th.
So we probably need to do this in the next couple of weeks, then?
Yeah, so we, and our board meeting's on the 19th, which we can have an executive session prior to, if that fits with everybody's schedule to, but that, that would be pretty, that executive session would theoretically be for us to kind of debrief with Tim, so we would need to have a.
Almost on the 4th.
Yeah, one before that. So I guess my question is, is everybody going to be here, you know, the next couple of weeks, or, and/or like the day, you know, the 18th?
Next Wednesday and Thursday, I have a work meeting that's out of town.
Okay.
So if we did it next week, I would need to do another day other than Wednesday or Thursday. But other than that, I agree.
Okay, well, I'm going to, I'll text Scott in parts unknown and see when he's going to be back. I don't, I don't know if he's.
I think he's a week out.
Yeah, I don't even, yeah, if he knows when he's going to be back.
I think it's a week.
Okay. But we'll, yeah, we'll pick a day.
Okay.
And while, we also have our meeting on the 5th with Renee.
So we can.
We're starting at 5:00.
Right. So if you wanted to meet an hour, maybe an hour, if you got all of the information to you, so you could prepare something for maybe a 4:00 or a 4:30.
Yeah.
Session, then actually, you're just on one night, that would save you the evening.
Okay.
He also took input from staff, right, as well, and the community, right?
He did, yeah, he kind of selected some, some leaders in the district and had them disseminate, you know, a questionnaire.
Right. Is that something we're going to do?
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, I think so, to some degree. I, again, I'll kind of, this is the first year I will have done this, and so I'll get with Scott a little bit, and kind of decide how we want to do it, but I mean, I don't see any reason why we can't have this done by the February meeting.
Do you want to do a quick text, see if we can?
Yeah. What, is there any benefit for, on, on your side, on the teachers? I mean, would it be easier for you guys, for us?
As far, as far as.
That March meeting day?
With our administrative team is comfortable with the February meeting to make our recommendations for next year.
Okay.
So we don't need any additional time, or movement of the March day.
Okay, yeah, and say, if, we can decide in February, worst-case scenario, or something, we need more, you, you guys need more time on your side, but I think we should be able to get our part done.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll do a little calendar maneuvering, get it figured out. But, yeah, if everybody would take these and, and get them back to me in a couple of weeks, that would be great. I appreciate it.
Yeah, so that session on February 5th will be three weeks from tonight.
Okay, yeah. More than enough time, if everybody, I mean, if everybody can, see if I can sneak out of work a little early or something. That would be the most ideal thing, rather than having another, a separate night. I'll, I'll send it out.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Let's go on to folder two. Okay, 8.6, Proposed School Calendar Change, January 24th.
Yeah, so this is the information I sent to you yesterday. And so, Andy and I recall during bargaining in August, it was suggested that K through 5 teachers would benefit from having additional time during the four grading days, one at the end of each quarter. And so we attempted to do that on November 1st, at the end of the first grading period, and it wasn't ideal. Essentially, this is already a reduced day for all kids, it's a noon dismissal. But, so we started to look at maybe potentially some other ways that would make it more effective, and take into account all examples. So on the pink sheet then, would be the four variations, if you will, to, that relate to the K-5 students on that day. First of all, you realize, to remind you that all of our elementary students are significantly over the minimum requirements of hours for attendance, because they're essentially attached to the high school sets, because of busing, they're, they have excess hours. So the four proposals in front of you, essentially, one is, we would do the same as we did in November. The second option is that we would excuse students in grades K-5 from attending those morning classes. A third option would essentially become that even though kids are excused from attendance, those who could not make arrangements for childcare, the school would be open for childcare, which is essentially is the same as number one. Because honestly, the activities that happened on November 1, there was, because the teachers were doing their grading and preparing for conferences, it was a high instructional day. There was extended kindergarten, or, excuse me, extended recess.
Four-hour recess, pretty much, yeah, make a movie, yeah.
Yeah, and so, then the last day would be try to find nine subs, who would try to continue instruction as a normal day, while the teachers are doing their grades and so on. And it is acknowledged by the secondary teachers that the different types of grading does give some allowance for K-5 to have, you know, in my four years here, we've had different variations. We've had grading day be a full day for everyone, and then we've gone to a half-day schedule. This one is that half-day, but still want to recognize the requests of the K-5 staff. And so the administration comes to you tonight with the recommendation for you to consider number two in excusing those students.
That's the one that was announced, right?
It was announced, it was announced originally, yes, and then I was reminded that by policy, any changes to the calendar after it's adopted need to be approved by the board, so I bring it to you tonight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of of the opinion, I mean, the notification, that they've had, the parents have had two weeks already to make plans, and I know, I know it's difficult in cases, but I don't really like any of the other options as it is. I mean, I, excusing them from school seems to be the most practical thing to do, and they can still, who are students who are close enough and don't need a ride, can come get a meal from the cafeteria, and maybe the snack pack people can load up.
For more.
Kids that are in the far reaches, that don't live in town or something. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with number two.
I am too.
And I would ask that you also, let's go ahead and make this change for April the 3rd, which is the end of the third quarter as well.
Yeah, so that'll, that'll get us through the rest of the school year.
Yes, and then as we did next month, I meant planning on bringing calendars for 2021 and 2122 for your consideration, and so we would make those a done deal already.
Yeah.
So we need a motion on this, please.
I move we excuse the K through 5 from attending school on January 24th and April 3rd.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, done deal.
Thank you.
Okay, Board Member Reports, any or comments?
I'll say, I'll talk about the Technology Committee.
Yes.
I've been doing a lot of, attending those meetings and doing a lot of listening in the last meetings, but I think there's a lot of, a lot of great work that's happening. The committee now has representation from K through 2, representation through 3 through 5, of course, 6 through 8 has got Corey, and then I guess he is the appointed chair, Mackenzie Lee, and those two are doing a lot, a lot of work in Riley Creek. And then Mr. Metzger is coming over from the high school, and we have Greg Brown is representing the high school as well, and of course, Mr. Wilson, and then Jeremy Skinner, who's there. And I just want to say that, yeah, I feel that as a committee, there's strides that are happening on the board goal of technology, from my, from my viewpoint, what I'm seeing. And so, no things take time, but it's just, there's, the wheels are in motion, people are coming with a lot of great ideas and out of fun things, and so, yeah, there's great processes happening there. That's all I've got. So good job, Technology Committee.
Yeah, yes, thank you. Bye, bye, you got something nice for the next meeting. Because, I mean, you look at where we were, I mean, well, previous to Cousteau, if you remember.
Oh, Dan Springer, I think, Mr. Springer.
Yeah, yeah.
Dan's been very influential.
And to where we are now, I mean, there's one, right? And it works, supposedly. It's all start streaming Netflix and see what happens. Actually, that's not it. Yeah, no, I have nothing to add, other than, did everybody read the little blurb? I know we kind of, Tim sent it out after the meeting about, in regards to public comment. Is it, I just want to make sure everybody's, I mean, we're okay with how it all came out?
You have the brochures, I'll be able to.
Okay, yeah, I'll grab one on the way out. I know you emailed and.
Yeah.
Did we make changes to it?
We made some slight alterations based on the comments that were.
I forget what those were.
Essentially cleaned up some of, like, it said on, one of them said 10 minutes, it said 5 or.
Oh, yeah.
And the other one was, if there was a topic that was going to potentially have several people that they select representatives, that may be only one or two, rather than several. Those are, I think, were the additions that were made after board, board discussion.
Okay, well, yeah, I just want to make sure everybody had seen it and reviewed it, and we were, we were good with that. And aside from that, I have nothing else to add, other than welcome back from the break, and happy 2020.
I don't have anything to add.
Thank you for the cards from Riley Creek and the signs. I appreciate the time that went into those, they're nice, thank you. And the cake, see how many.
I actually really enjoy reading the cards, it's entertaining.
Yeah.
Although some, in years past, some of them have been directed at specific people, as I recall. We'll have to save Scott's for him.
Sure.
All right, if there's nothing else, meeting reminders, Wednesday, February 5th, 5:00, ROSBA training with Renee, and then regular board meeting February 19th at 6:00 PM, and we'll probably tack on an executive session at 5:00, if everything works with the schedule, and then we'll, we'll get our, our other workshop, the date figured out. If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned at 7:04.